I believe this is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We may just see. Woman being back, we motion on the wall in the east side. If there's any other questions or more information about City Hall. There is no, oh, roll call please.
Stuart Crete.
Here.
Shane Sweet.
Here.
Carl Walker.
Here.
Ryan ideas.
Here.
Chris Rappel.
Here.
Patrick Nagle.
Okay, there are no proclamations tonight. So, the next item, we're following our normal agenda tonight. And first of all, we ask if there's anybody in the audience other than what's on the agenda that wants to speak to something. Then we go to the Department head's consent agenda. And then we have public hearings. And then we get to the items that are, do not require a public hearing. And as to when we'll have the discussion that probably most of you are here for. So, is there anybody in the audience that wants to discuss something other than the item that's on the agenda dealing with cemetery?
I'd like to just, Troy Johnston, 249 Continental Estates. Ask a quick question if there's any sort of update that could be had. As a child, growing up in this neighborhood, I've got an interest as well as visiting my mother a lot. And that's the JFK housing type project that was started here a while back. Don't know if you can share any updates on that or not, in terms of kind of what the progress is or what the updates on that.
You want me to? Yeah, so, so at the last council meeting, the owner of that property did come to the city. The city several years ago had entered into a development agreement with the property owner. The concern at that time was that East Hall, which is the one on the corner there, that that was in a dilapidated state. There was concerns about safety.
I'm more, that's fine, I'm more specifically the one just north of the tennis courts.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
So that's a different, yeah, that's a different project. So the city acquired title to that particular property through, through a foreclosure process. The city then went out for development proposals. The developer came in, was awarded the contract, they entered into a development agreement with that particular contractor or developer. It had two phases to it. The first was the completion and the development of what was the Camel Hall site. And then there was the playground green space area. That was the second phase of that. There were timelines that were prescribed within the first phase. There are discussions that the developers thus far not looking like they could track to complete the phase one deadlines. There's, there hasn't been anything meaningfully happened because there hasn't been a violation of that, that development agreement as of yet. Because we haven't come up against deadlines. At that point in time, the city's going to have to decide what it wants to do. Whether it be to revoke the development agreement and go back out for development proposals or to grant an extension of certain conditions with that particular developer.
Okay, free with liberty to say when those, that deadline is, or maybe you don't know.
I believe it was the end of this year.
Right, so that is a redevelopment project. And so there is a TIF timeline that kicks in. And it was anticipated when we entered into that redevelopment agreement that the project would be at full value by June or month 2025. There is a building permit that has been pulled. I know there's some work that has been done. And we've been in some conversations about concrete work for the parking lot area and approach. But the building permit is like any other building permit, it's good for 12 months.
Okay, thank you.
I believe there has been a little bit of work done. The new roof has been put on that building. Solid around the outside, I believe is finished. The interior has been totally sandblasted for corrosion on the walls and on the pipes. The windows have been purchased. And I understand that the windows have been placed in the building. But that's ahead. I've driven by there, I haven't seen the lobby, land down, can't see it. I have not seen anything. Okay. Any other items that's not on the agenda that somebody wants to bring up? Okay. Department head before. Do you have anything to add?
I don't.
Okay.
I do have one item to add to the claims listing. We have a potential replacement snowplow truck that the street fund is going to investigate. So there is a check for $75,000 that I would like included in the claims report. We have the ability to go up to the dealer, negotiate on it, put a deposit on it and come home with it if they commit to the agreement. So that would be an add to the list of claims.
And that's all, but just for now.
Yes, right.
Okay, we'll move forward. The consent decision, three items on there. I'm going to review those. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay. Motion to second to approve the consent. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Crete.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Rappel.
Yes.
Orford.
Yes.
Ideas.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, we'll start with the public hearings. Amendment to the City of Wilmer Ridge regulations regarding section 5.09.06 height of lot requirements specifically to lot area and lot, lot within R3 zoning districts. To provide an amendment to the zoning regulations. Lastly, the developer to give us something else.
Good evening, Kevin Anderson, JEO, 1937 North Chestnut. Here with a text amendment to the R3 zoning district. If you'll recall, last time, a couple of months ago, here in front of City Council, we were here to discuss the concept of a planning unit development, or PUD, as a mechanism for what we're trying to do up at Wilmer Ridge residential development intent 2030 North Chestnut. That was up for discussion with the City Council after having a negative recommendation from the Planning Commission. It was our offer to go back and work with the Planning Commission and see what we can do to better implement what we're trying to do, find a better mechanism. And I truly think we're here with that in hand. So I think that the Council for their inputs and feedback when we were here last time, but also the Planning Commission for their feedback. Because I think we've got a new means to the same ends, but in a way that I think really helps a broader area than just what we're trying to do at Wilmer Ridge. And that's this zoning text amendment where we are requesting a reduction in the R3 zoning district of the lot square footage requirements and lot width requirements in that R3 district for single-family detached homes. All other requirements and provisions of the zoning district will remain the same. But we're requesting that reduction of a total square footage from 7,500 square feet to 6,500 square feet. And a reduction of the lot width from 70 feet as a lot width down to 50 feet. And we went through a process to identify how other comparable jurisdictions treat this equivalent level of residential zoning. In this case, it's the highest density of standard residential development that we've got here in Waukegan jurisdiction. So we took that in comparison to see how other comparable communities effectively tier their density requirements for detached, single-family square footage homes. So that's what you see up here where we look at some of these other communities and their various zoning districts of various densities. This R3, and in keeping, trying to keep things as much as apples to apples, the highest density residential zoning district, R3, you'll see others in R4 and other, but you'll see across the board how other jurisdictions kind of effectively tier those minimum square footages so that you're increasing potential density for single-family homes as you span from an R1 district to an R3, in some cases, an R4 district. So, as we took a look at, on the average, what those other jurisdictions are doing in their highest density jurisdictions, on average, those communities are at about 6,425 square feet for a minimum lot size and 60 feet for a minimum lot width. That kind of helped us determine what was, you know, an appropriate fit for our R3 zoning district. And that's where we come in at 6,500 as a minimum lot size. But we go down to 50 feet as a, as a minimum lot width. And we'll kind of get into some of that, what we think the broader benefit of that jurisdiction is. We are also comfortable with this type of amendment as the means for what we're trying to do up at Wilmer Ridge. If you remember, our proposed PUD not only incorporated the 16 townhome lots that we're trying to do these villa concepts on, which is really kind of making the push for, for this type of amendment, but it also incorporated Lot 73, the four and a half or so acres of frontage right on Chestnut, which is currently in, which is in the C3 zoning district along that corridor. And we envision that PUD enabling as much flexibility as possible for a multifamily concept in that area, but also a traditional kind of commercial acre and a half, two acre development. Not knowing what ultimately that wanted to be at the time. But that PUD would have given us flexibility to, you know, to toy with setbacks or access or parking requirements just like we did for our first one across the street there. But since that time, I have a committed user on the commercial side of that, which fits on the site. It's a, it's a, by right within the C3 district. So that has us much more comfortable proposing or utilizing this means for a text amendment for what we're trying to do on those townhome lots. Because everything we want to do on that Lot 73, that commercial lot, is allowed by right and fits within all the setbacks. And, you know, we can park it all, it's got a, you know, smooth and clean access. So that is another factor that has us comfortable approaching this way rather than a, than a PUD. That's kind of not exactly germane, but I wanted to give you a little context to, to this approach here. So I mentioned the broader benefit of, of this amendment and the reduction of these lots. So that's kind of what's displayed here. If I can zoom it out a little bit. Everything colored in here are parcels currently under a R3 zoning district. And again, I want to stress, these are parcels and not necessarily properties that have single-family homes on them. But that's where you'll see large parcels up here and then dozens of parcels down here. A lot of these do have single-family homes on them, but not all. You know, some are city property, as an example. Some are vacant. Some have, you know, condos on them or other things that, you know, aren't necessarily what we're talking about for a detached, single-family home. But especially up in this area in northeast of downtown, a lot of these are single-family residential. And anything colored are parcels smaller than 7,500 square feet. So in a, in a sense, any of these that have single-family homes on them are legally non-conforming lots. Anything colored. Anything colored green are, are lots smaller than 7,500 square feet. So that's, that's, what you're seeing in green are, are legal, are those legally non-conforming parcels if they have single-family homes on them. And so where we are getting to with this text amendment is it could help bring a lot of these parcels into compliance if a single-family home at the city on, on some of these. And I got the numbers here. There are 192 parcels, all colored here in R3 zoning districts. Of those, 76 are smaller than 7,500 square feet. About 40 percent.
Is that the green ones or the red ones?
The green ones are those that are smaller. Yeah, yeah, the green ones are smaller, all the colored ones are, are R3 parcels. So compare that with, if we do make this text amendment, and then this is a comparison of that, now all of those colored green are still potentially legally non-conforming because they'd be smaller than 6,500 square feet. And that's the requested threshold here. So it does make, it doesn't solve everything. And I'm not here trying to represent that every single one of these is a, you know, property with a single family and, and non-conforming. But of those in this residential areas, it would bring a number of lots into compliance. And that's going to help the viability of, of those lots. You know, any opportunity for redevelopment after a natural disaster, for example. So it's going to help a lot of those parcels in addition to encouraging a number of things that we're trying to do up at Wilmer Ridge, but even as a broader community base, you know, by reducing some of these minimum lot sizes, you encourage more density, you encourage the ability for smaller homes on smaller lots. And it helps make a dent towards that overall affordability discussion. And that's going to help, as an example, with what we're trying to do with what, with these villas on those 16 townhome lots associated with Wilmer Ridge. These are floor plans that we really like and we would plan to implement essentially as soon as we can, at least a couple of these on some of those lots. And these are, you know, these are the, the look, the floor plans, the square footages. There are two-story options. We like these from a single story because frankly, it's just an attractive alternative to the market for whether it's young families, it could be empty nesters. All these can be made at kind of zero grade entry for ADI compliance. It's just another good option for the Waukegan market in our opinion. And it expands a, a large market segment of who'd be interested in these. We've seen a lot of these go in other jurisdictions and they've been extremely, extremely popular. It's a similar market, you look to attract with a duplex townhome, but it just provides that much more marketability because, you know, it is a standard home on individual lots. You're not sharing that common wall. Makes it a little more attractive for young families, for example, so. So that's, that's the request and some of the basis. Again, it's a request to, in the R3 district only, reduce the minimum lot size and square footage from 7,500 to 6,500 in that lot width, only in that R3 zoning district, which is our highest density district. So, other than that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
What are the setbacks?
Setbacks all remain the same.
Five foot on the sides?
Five foot on the sides, 25, I think.
I was most interested in the sides. Did you have, that was 45 and a fifth.
Yeah, yeah, these thick.
This is a public hearing, is there anybody in the public that has any questions? Okay, we will. Let's begin, anybody have any questions or comments on this, this November?
The Planning Commission has approved it.
Yes. Who would like one?
Recommended.
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 I didn't know if there was any, what was the differences from the first time that it was not recommended to this time.
Well, the difference is that it was a PUD application previously, which is specific to, specific to just the parcels that are owned by this developer. This is a zoning amendment change, which changes it for the entire community.
I think one of the concerns the Planning Commission commonly has, which has been my impression, is this, the concept of waivers, right? That we're going to grant a waiver for a particular site, particular structure. Whereas this is a change in his uniform throughout the city and more fairly applied on all properties. So I think that, in my understanding, has a big difference between then and now.
And that's all you're going to find in R3. Any other comments in the council?
Will make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Second. Motion to close the public hearing, roll call.
Rappel?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Crete?
Yes.
Okay, the action item would be introducing an ordinance to provide for amendments to zoning regulations.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
We only have five here. Anybody interested in waiving three readings?
I would make a motion to waive the three readings.
I'll second that also.
Okay, discussion? Roll call on waiving the three readings.
Crete?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Rappel?
No.
Okay, that's the final reading.
Now you vote on the first reading.
Well, the final reading on the first.
You vote on the first reading since it didn't prove that a waiver.
Okay. Roll call on the first reading.
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Move to item two, approval of an application filed by San Creek Investments to rezone property described in track one or track A and part of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter, all in section three, township fourteen N, range seventeen of the sixth area. In the city of Wahoo, San Diego, Nebraska, a commodity known as twelve fifty-eight North Spruce, from C-two highway commercial district to C-three general commercial district, R-two residential district and R-three residential district.
Perfect, yep, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Council members. My name is Travis Hazard. I'm here with Hazard Engineering, five, six, seven, West fifteenth, right here in Wahoo. Excited to be here tonight on behalf of San Creek Investments. We have a proposal in front of you and there's the two parts. We've got the application for zoning change. And we also have the preliminary plat application that will come next. But I'll kind of focus on just, just the vision, the approach and the need in terms of changing the zoning. Mike Hancock approached me with a vision here for a two-point-eight-four acre parcel on the east side of town. It's that entrance to the east side of town right on the curve there on Old Highway seventy-seven. Has goals there to, two major things that I think, as he approached me, excited me. When you look at a growing community like Wahoo, you've got childcare needs, senior living facilities that are needed, and just a joint community hall type of facility. So I was really excited about that. So in general, what we're proposing here for the rezone is going from a current parcel, there's actually two tracks that are both in the C-two district. We are proposing a zoning change to a C-three, an R-three and an R-two. And it'll be broken up into eleven different lots. Again, that, the zoning change requirement allows us to go from a C-two to a C-three, helps us meet the meeting hall requirements. And then the change from C-two to the R-three, R-two allows us to do townhomes slash triplexes. So there'd be slab-on-grade entrance. There is two walkouts on the triplex side. But the goal there is to provide opportunity for daycare facility in that old, the old motel that would be demoed slash renovated. In addition to the two townhomes and the triplexes that provide for senior living opportunities. So this here is the actual prelim application, prelim plat application for San Creek Senior Living Facility. So rezoning applications for this parcel right here.
This parcel, correct?
For all, for all three. So the whole thing is two-point-eight-four acres. It's, there's actually two tracks today, but it would be broken up and replatted. So today they are a C-two zoning district. And you would have, we would rezone this to be a C-three in the southeast or the bottom right-hand corner. There you go. Yep, and then you have your R-three, which would be on the western left-hand side. And that would allow us to meet our building, our lot size requirements for C-three, for R-three. And then the north two, top two lots would be an R-two, which is your slab-on-grade townhome style. So in general, yeah, that's, that's the purpose and the need and the vision for these parcels. Obviously, there's, there's challenges with every development and improvement to a project. You've got access that we, we gotta navigate through. We've got floodplain on a portion of that northeast part of the property that we have to navigate regulatory-wise. We've got drainage evaluations that we have to make sure we comply with, all the things. So ultimately, we'll get to where we have a prelim application here on the next item. And we'll walk through that in more detail. Happy to take any questions if you have one on the rezone.
Any questions from the public, comments? So you have a council?
What are we zoning around that?
That's a good question. So I did vote for a common member who talked sort of, right? Right now it's C-two, as Travis indicated. If you go to that last one here, right now, R-three is basically right here and then R-two is up here. So it's adjacent to R-three and R-two, so it isn't spot loaded because you're just expanding in various directions.
That's what we're looking for is R-three is the green facing there. R-three, our herbalish blue is R-two facing.
Right, correct.
That's, that was my first concern is like, we're not plotting this in the middle of something.
It's a little unusual when you have three different zonings within one project. It just happens to be the three different zones right adjacent to that right now.
It kind of works. And has this been through planning?
Yes. Down recommendation of approval.
Recommendation.
Correct, Tracy?
Yeah, I think we have lots of comments, but if those get met, then I think we did recommend.
And I would assume the only thing here, the oddity is probably zoning is contingent on final subdivision approval. Because I'm assuming you wouldn't want, the owner wouldn't want all this rezoned and then the subdivision doesn't go through.
Right.
So you, you should approve the zoning contention on the subdivision five.
So what could you do? First reading of the zoning regulation?
We'd match up the final.
And then if you move forward with the preliminary, then we move into the final. Once you do the final plat, then you would do the final reading on the zoning, which would make, then there wouldn't be any contingency, right? Is that right?
Yeah, you could, it's just whether you want to kind of close the hearing process on this or not, whichever you want to do is fine.
If we vote it, or we could close it, and then what would be the issue of reopening it?
You could.
Yeah, absolutely. You had the mayor at discretion of reopen after a public hearing, so.
I think so. We can get an indication of support or not. I think we should close the hearing and council take action.
Well, I told you we closed the public hearing. I'll sign it.
Been a motion to close the public hearing, roll call.
Rappel?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes.
Crete?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the action item would be approval of the application filed by San Creek Investments to rezone the properties listed below, knowing that there's more.
And this is by ordinance?
Yeah, so, certainly, I like Melissa's idea, which is pass the first reading and then you can match up the final reading.
It takes multiple readings.
Been a motion to approve the zoning property described below. Again.
It would be first reading.
Oh, yeah, first reading on an ordinance. Okay, roll call.
Orford?
Yes.
Crete?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, number three, subdivision application for San Creek Senior Living Edition, a two-point-four acre parcel of land, more or less located in track A and part of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter, all in section three, township fourteen N, R-Z-E. Consideration of approval of the sub-district application. Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions, comments?
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to find the best sheet that would give us, I'm going to start right here. Actually, I'm going to back up. So this, this here is a little more detail on our layout in terms of our preliminary plat application. You have lot lines that are preliminary, building footprint location preliminary, obviously to get a feel for what can fit here and identify considerations, questions you all may have, and make sure we incorporate that as we go forward into the final plating process. So I'm going to go back up here to this sheet right here. Essentially, what this does is the left-hand side of your sheet is north. The right-hand side of the sheet is south. And that curved road there is Old Highway seventy-seven, right on the east side of Wahoo as you're coming into town. To reiterate, like, like I said, Mike Hancock and his, his vision for, for this parcel, obviously it's unique. It's adding multiple facets and uses here. The left-hand side, which is the north end, like I said, is the townhomes, which would have rear view access to a water feature that we have planned for the middle of the complex or the facility. The triplexes on the south side that are in the R-three zone also have rear access to that. The goal is that there'd be a community type of field. You'd have a, a community walk path that surrounds a water feature. And the driving piece of a water feature, I'd tell you, is really for stormwater. You've got pre to post stormwater runoff conditions that we have to make sure we comply with. There's, there's storm drains on the south side of the project. There's roof drains off of buildings. We have to make sure that we reduce the stormwater impact as you develop it. So this, this provides us opportunity to do that. We will continue to work through details on the exact flows, sizing, but this is, this is generally speaking, some of the concept that is in, in updated here, so. Moving towards the right-hand side of the sheet, which is the south side, you've got a daycare facility planned. There's an existing, sorry, go ahead. Right there. Okay, so I'm going to zoom in on this area here. This is the existing motels there. There are the main building and then you've got the, the actual rooms here to the east. Those will be demoed. Internal renovations on those buildings as necessary to hold a daycare facility. And then we could have playground expansion there as needed. We are working through, there were good, good questions and comments in the planning commission meeting, but we're working through access onto this property. What is the best one? What's the safest? How do we keep private uses on private ground, but yet have access off of Spruce Street or up Old Highway seventy-seven via the right-of-way? So we've got some, we've got some things we're working out in, in terms of traffic flow, daily drop-off, and what that would mean for this, this parcel. Clubhouse on the north, or sorry, the east side of the property, but on the top side of the sheet, right here, this is the clubhouse. Again, square footage, layout, this is all conceptual. Mike, Mike made sure I put a pickleball court there, so if any of you know him, he'd gladly play a pickleball game with you if you desire. But again, this, this creates opportunities for the public for walking around the trail, which right now, the way we have it, it's a tenth of a mile exactly. Walk it ten times, you're at a mile. We've got water feature in the middle of it. You've got a clubhouse where you could rent that space. There'd be a HOA setup to where you'd have joint use of this property as you, as you live and own these. And so it just creates a nice community feel, opportunity for birthday parties, retirement parties, whatever that may be. And that's where we'd have the shared use of our parking lot with our daycare. So that kind of gives you a makeup of where we're at with all of that. I, I would add that as of right now, we're not planning any variances. We had a pre-application here with city staff and we've walked through subdivision regulations. We see no need for variances as of right now, so that's our plan. With that, public utilities. The only public utility we would have is public sanitary, which we would have a dedicated utility easement on the backside of the buildings. We'd work through that, but there'd be dedicated sanitary that would collect these and be able to drain and gravity flow into an existing manhole here to the left side of the property on Spruce. So with that being said, take any questions that you may have on the prelim plat application again.
What was your flood maps? That was in there somewhere. Are you going to close or you're in the progress?
I'll give you a, I've looked at this enough, I'm just going to tell you. On the northeast corner here, let's do this northeast corner, you have a Zone AE floodplain. So what that is, is it's a detailed floodplain, detailed study area, which means it's already been accounted for, understanding your floodway to the north along San Creek itself. You've got Zone A, which gives your BFE elevations. And so it's already accounting for encroachments and buildable area within those on either side of the San Creek channel. So it's got your BFE elevation. We make sure we build above that. We go through the LOMRF process for a letter of macrovision based on fill. And then we do an elevation certificate based on the constructed building to make sure it is above floodproof. And we're, we're planning two and a half feet above floodplain right now? I don't like to, I don't like to pinch that down. We want to make sure we're flood resilient at the same time as we try and improve the property at the same time.
So you need a letter of macrovision, LOMRF from FEMA to?
In order to get that parcel out of the floodplain, yes, sir.
That'd be fun.
This, this past May, when there was flooding there on north end of town specifically, what did this area look like?
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so you can see there's some existing contours underneath it here. And what I'm going to tell you is to the west, there's, there's a grade change sloping to the east. I, I was out there myself and water basically backs up to, it was, it was just, just short of the intersection here with, I forget this road, Pen Road J, is that right?
Twelve Street.
Twelve Street, thank you. So it was just shy of that. So as it follows that contour around, essentially what it does is there's, there's floodplain that runs great about in this area. And, and frankly, that was really, really close to what I saw and was reflected in the field. Physically, it matched up. So again, what that is, is it's a Zone AE floodplain. We obviously account for a hundred-year stormwater runoff from this parcel. Off to the next parcel, we make sure we capture that, make sure it doesn't run off any faster than what it is today. And then we go through the Zone AE floodplain permitting process, which is regulatory through FEMA, for any, for any fill that's placed in there, so.
So with this middle, there was also a preliminary drainage study that was done. We had that go through our drainage with J O and our other drainage studies. Provided comments to Travis and those will be addressed in the final drainage study that would be submitted as part of the final plating process.
I was looking at this when it was a captive community and then you said, probably can walk around the pool. Where do the liabilities stand with that pool?
Those, that was a good question. It was brought up in the planning commission meeting as well. Definitely something we need to look at. I don't have an answer for you today. What, what does that look like? How does it function? What's in the subdivision agreement? Like, I, I don't know what that is today, to be honest. Just for reference, the, the water feature itself, that's an eight, that's an eight-foot wide trail around the perimeter as of right now. So we'd obviously make sure that there's safe, whether it's a, forget about the liability side, is it safe? Like, what do we need to make sure it's safe? We have stable shoulders. We have an adequate walk path so that you're not shoulder to shoulder and, you know, pushing off. So those are things that we look at in terms of the actual.
Defense and gate?
As of right now, I don't have a plan for that. If that's a requirement, we would, we would entertain it and look through that, but I think that somewhat defeats the purpose. It's not a public.
This is all, every corner of the property will be private, so it will be publicly dedicated. It's technically trespassing unless somebody is, isn't invited to. Yeah, but it's enforcement issue. So where that, where that pond feature is, that is the lowest part of the property?
Yes. And we would still make sure that we keep our, so our berms, we're trying to target that elevation to where we don't get flood, like floodwater backup into us, right? We want to make sure that we can still contain what we need to, safely let it drain away at a, at a reduced rate. So that is the lowest spot. If I have my, yeah, I don't, I don't have the finished grade elevations on there. Oh, yes, I do. Yeah, so right now, the BFE is eleven eighty point two. And, and that was confirmed in the drainage study that was reviewed. So eleven eighty point two, eleven eighty point four, something like that there as you cross the property. So for reference, we're actually putting the buildings eleven eighty four point five. So that's, that's where our proposed plan is right now. Granted, we got to review all of our drainage, or sorry, sanitary system. I've already proofed the concept that that will work gravity-wise, but that's what I'm proposing right now in terms of grade on the buildings and the pond around it. The pond will be. The pond will be about 1180, 1179 in terms of any water surface, 1181 around your walk path. So your townhomes will be elevated by four or five feet from the pond feature. Your walkout on your triplexes would be, again, the same thing. That's 1183, so you'd be two and a half feet above that. So it kind of creates this concourse field to your water feature, yes?
The clubhouse in the daycare being within a parcel of that, is that an issue with them being multiple or different uses sharing the same park?
Technically, commercial zoning allows for that, but there's certainly something, I think, the planning commission, I think, expressed that too in terms of how you're gonna calculate parking apartments of that area with two structures. Because depending on how you define the clubhouse and that commercial business, they are going to have to have, featuring collectively in this parking area, they're gonna have to have sufficient spaces.
Well, my only thought is, again, in the future, if somebody decides they want to sell the daycare off, that's gonna go to a different area, and the rest of that should also be part of that subdivision, but you can't if it's all one parcel. Without parsing it out, you've got a parking issue, so.
It becomes a practical, certainly, issue for the property or community, how marketable is it, what can they have to do with it?
Right. You're right. We wondered if those are just a section of that, the daycare off, but then you're gonna have a parking issue again, if you have that parking free, your parking access for both, that's a problem.
Yeah, if they ever wanted, this is, they ever wanted a section off, I think it would require them to do a condominium regime where Unit A is the, the daycare unit B is the clubhouse, and the common area is the parking lot, and there's connections through a condominium regime.
But there's still a greater area.
You could do it, it just would be a lot more.
And right now, that is all planned as one track.
Yeah, so it's by concern.
Right.
One track, they may not always be... That's a seven or eight concern right now, but just the parking thing is the first thing I thought of, is how do you section it out?
I think, I don't want to speak to certain points, but my understanding was drainage, the entrance, traffic, and the parking lot are the big questions.
We can definitely think about that, yeah.
I mean, that's definitely a couple of properties, I'm sure, that we can manage for a design to work.
I appreciate that. Again, I'd like to take the vision and try to put something to it. Again, I think it's a great thing for the east side of town, as you come into town, it'll present well. It fits the need of the town, so I'm excited about it and I hope to find some...
Okay, we still have a public hearing, yes?
Can I ask a question? So this is right next to the cement plant?
South of the cement, out of the...
South of the cement plant. So what kind of a barrier are you gonna have between the cement plant and this development?
Yeah, so right now, I'm trying to, I don't have a good aerial that would kind of give you a presentation of that. The north lot here, there's actually a pretty good chunk of property that separates that from the actual plant itself. Forgive me, it might be 300 feet, maybe, something like that, for reference. Say that again.
Occasionally have forces running in that section out there.
So how much dirt are you hauling in for this?
So we're working through some of the drainage stuff on itself, but when you dig your walkout for the triplexes, you'll get some dirt, when you dig your pond, you'll get some dirt. So our goal is to balance this as much as we can.
So where's the entrance to it gonna be? Off the old highway or off the side street?
Yeah, so initially, we were looking off old Highway 77. Right now, we've got it coming in off of Spruce Street, so the west, the west of Spruce. Well, right now, it's just off of Spruce.
How far, how far do they...
So then if people build there, are they gonna have to have flood insurance?
No, so that's part of the LOMRF process. So a LOMRF process allows the property owner to effectively remove a parcel or remove a structure from the floodplain. So because you're elevated, as a PE, I can sign off on a elevation certificate, which says to a bank, a lender, a property owner, that that parcel is above the floodplain. And therefore, out of the requirement for federally mandated flood insurance. So that's our process.
So you're gonna build it up three feet or whatever you said the ground, you're gonna haul in like dirt and that. What's that gonna do to the concrete plant? Put it all underwater?
So many water to come off of there and create more water for the daycare.
Yeah, I'm trying, I want to try and keep it as, like, I can give you a lot of technical, that's part of the drainage study that Melissa's talking about. It's been reviewed, it's a preliminary drainage study that tries to, obviously it's a concern, get it valid. Our goal in this is to make sure that when we make improvements, the water that runs off of that property is in fact less as you make the improvement. So that's part of the water feature. You actually take that, you capture all the water that runs, that was already running off of it. We capture it, put it in a water feature, that can then slowly release it. So we'd have an overflow on this northeast corner of that water feature. And instead of letting it all run off at one time, we capture it and let it slowly run off, so that's the...
So how deep is the water feature?
That we don't know yet, that's the, those are the details we have to work through on a preliminary to file.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to point out, Travis, if you move up to that little triangle that we talked about...
Oh, the south piece?
Yeah, where the parking is gonna be and how that's not...
Yep, sure.
The property, if you can just clarify that.
Sure, yeah, so Tracy brought up a question in the planning commission meeting about... So this is 12th Street, County Road J, that used to extend through before old Highway 77 came in, is that right, Melissa? Thank you. So Kelly Rodel, used to go through before old Highway 77. The old Highway 77 then came through, was DOT right-of-way. That then was relinquished with the bypass and then beaded back to the city. So right now, that parcel, Tracy, like Tracy was mentioning, is technically public right-of-way. So it is public right-of-way. The goal, what we were envisioning here is, private landowners can utilize any public right-of-way to access their property. So our initial layout was coming in off the south side. We thought it would take advantage of grades, just flow within the parking area. We are revisiting that because we want to make sure this is a good thing. We want to make sure it's done right, it's safe. Again, if any access off of public right-of-way to private, we could do that, but there's some parking stalls we get off, but we're looking at moving that. Getting it away from the intersection, moving it further north on Spruce, so you'd actually come in just south.
And that drainage is there.
Yep, so there's, you want me to talk about that too? Yeah, so there's existing drainage, which our plan, again, we have to capture our drainage on the site. But there's curb inlets here, there's utilities, there's stormwater drains into that low area, and then essentially runs along this entire south side. So there's public utilities that all run through here, which again, putting a parking lot in there was kind of our goal or the entrance. To reiterate what Tracy was talking about, we are looking at the configurations of that for safety, traffic flow patterns within that, daily use, like, we're trying to be smart about that. Hopefully that answers any questions.
Any other questions?
What year floodplain, what's it like, what's it like, a hundred-year flood, or what, how's it elevation? What's it safe to, what year flood?
So the hundred-year flood is 1180.2 in terms of elevation-wise. I haven't run calculations on what it's safe to, but I tell you that three and a half foot will go a long ways. Preliminary, that's what I know.
How would it be safe in the 2019 flood?
How would it be safe from the 2019 flood? Well, I'd have to go back and I'd probably have to look at what that did, I don't know exactly. But, yeah, definitely, definitely something that, we, I preach flood resilience. Our goal is to be flood resilient while also taking advantage of trying to make sure we improve our property the right way, so.
Raising that, where you're gonna raise in that floodplain right now, you're gonna raise that up, is that gonna, when it does flood, does that push more water back towards the concrete and every place else?
So that water that was already running off of it?
Onto that area there, that would probably be about four foot.
Yep, so picture...
That four-foot water would have to be pushed back someplace else.
So right now, the elevation of the property is about 1179 and 1180. Okay, so for frame of reference, 1179, 1180. The floodplain there today, again, verified with the drainage studies, 1180.2 and 1180.4. So even with the flooding here earlier this spring, the four-foot, I mean, it's only about 12 to 18 inches deep potentially, is what I'm trying to tell you.
By filling that up, the water is close to the concrete plant already when it does flood. Is that gonna push more water towards the concrete plant, raise that water up any?
Our goal here, again, I understand your question, yeah, it's because you'd be adding dirt, filling in, and technically that volume of water.
That volume of water, that goes someplace else.
So what was coming off of that property?
No, it's not coming down, it's from the creek. It's not the rainwater flowing down, it's the creek water that's coming up.
Right.
So that's not runoff, that's gonna be from the creek itself, coming out, spilling out, spreading out. You build that hole, is that gonna push it back, everything back north?
Does it create a dam essentially?
Basically a dam there.
To block off flow, no, the answer is no. It is in a, what do you call it, ineffective flow area. So I don't have all the floodplain maps in front of me, it'd be phenomenal if I had that, I could more clearly answer your question. Ineffective flow area means that the floodplain is conveying water along Saint Creek. As it fills up, again, it backs up, backs up into the concrete plant, backs up into this property, and generally speaking, it sits there, right? Like I was down there, got video, it just, it sits there, right? So it's a holding area, it holds a certain volume of water. All the other water is therefore bypassing, like, the actual flow is bypassing to the north along Saint Creek. So you've got backup water, it fills it, this becomes ineffective, so this volume of water, which would have already come off of the property, we are now gonna capture that water within our parcel, in our own water feature, and not even let it add to that volume of water. Does that make sense?
Okay, in that general area, I have seen it going over the railroad track. And that water is flowing over the railroad track in that area. You can wash it out, or you could actually walk under that railroad track. So that is actually flowing out and around to the railroad, that actually is a dam, so it's gonna flow back to the south. Besides going underneath the bridge, it comes south over the railroad track and flowing that direction, so there's a water flow that way.
I'd like to close the public hearing, because I know our next section will be lengthened maybe. So, I'll put it this way, we've created the interest of this group, at least in this project. So, watch the agendas. When this comes up again, you'll have your opportunity for the developer to answer the questions. And hopefully by then, we're on set crew.
And to clarify, all we're at right now is preliminary plot approval. All you, all the developers required to do with preliminary plot things is provide the concept, not get into the details of exactly what the surface water drainage plan and all of those things. So all right now, they're probably going farther than you normally would see in getting into some of those things, but right now, all we're talking about is concept.
I understand your motion to close the public hearing.
The rose, the public hearing?
One second.
Go call.
Creasy?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Orford?
Yes.
Okay, so the actions tonight would be approval of preliminary plot for the property discussed. So we'll...
One second.
Any other questions in the council? Go call.
Creasty?
Yes.
And Orford?
Yes.
Sweet?
Yes.
Ideas?
Yes.
Rappel?
Yes.
Okay, I am not requiring a public hearing, and here's the process we'll go through tonight, and we know there'll be people who want to speak. We'll open up the discussion. My first question is, I don't know if people maybe are here to listen, how many people are planning on making a two-minute presentation? Just wanna hear this open, you're talking.
I said in the front, I didn't know what's going on.
I guess I have a question or a statement, I don't know.
Okay, so we'll get your questions. When you're done with the questions, our straight superintendent and the senator superintendent will go in. It will present his policies, that have been adopted. Some of them go back many years, some of them are early recent. They'll explain the process we've went through and looking at the policies, finish that up. Melissa will add comments to it, know that might add some. And then we hopefully can have a closure on it. When you come up to speak, so that we can create a database for, maybe for further communication. We want you to put down your name and your address. And if you're just here to listen in, I don't know, there's a sheet of paper at the back, we'll provide one. When you leave to sign that, so you will be on a database. Anybody have a question on that? So, first speaker? Linda, you're up. Say your name.
Linda Little, 1299 County Road 17 here in Wahoo. I believe I know all the council members, and as most of you know, I'm a native of Wahoo and I'm a local business owner. I asked to be put on the agenda after receiving word from friends regarding the clean sweep that was conducted at the cemetery. Personally, my parents and brother are buried on the south end of K&amp;H Plated Property, what is commonly thought of as Sunrise Cemetery. Before I go further, can I ask the council, how many of you have immediate family buried at Sunrise Cemetery or in Greenland Cemetery? How many folks in the audience have immediate families buried in either public cemetery? Thank you. I have been, I was out of the country from late September to October 4th, and was made aware of the implementation of the clean sweep from a Facebook comment from a friend and fellow citizen. I'd remembered a post earlier in the year regarding the cemetery, and interpreted from that post that the items in the cement urns or monument urns were considered safe from removal because they did not interfere with mowing or trimming. Fountain Florida just placed two native fall brasses in the urns and the pots in September for me to mark the anniversary of my brother's death and celebrate my parents' birthdays this fall. The florist and I assumed those items would be within the deadlines as those potted plants were placed in the cemetery urns we purchased from the city 30 years ago. A drive-through of the cemetery presented a much bleaker picture. It was really a scorched earth removal of live plants and urns are out, artificial arrangement of mementos and personal items left on monuments or monument footings. It was something I'd never seen before. The cemetery felt utterly deserted. My heart ached, not for myself, but for the many family and friends who I knew would be totally shattered by the removal of those items. Including my friend Terry Elliott of 1545 North Elm, who asked me to read the following on her behalf. Terry wrote, "Wahoo community as a whole has experienced many losses of family, friends, children in the 39 years our family has resided here. This proved true in 2001 when I lost my 17-year-old son Kyle in a tragic car accident. This community rallied around our family with prayer, time, support, meals. Included in the grieving and support were notes, letters, mementos, flowers, trinkets, medals, pictures left on Kyle's gravestone. Being a frequent visitor of Sunrise, I often chatted with the caretaker at that time, Lyle Peterson. When the mayor, a couple of years after Kyle's death, ordered a clean sweep of Sunrise Cemetery, I arrived at Kyle's grave to find those precious keepsakes gone. I just started sobbing. I looked up and Lyle walked toward me carrying a bag. In that bag were all those special memories left on Kyle's gravestone. He knew and understood grief and grieving. The caretaker in charge of Sunrise Cemetery should be required to possess that empathy and compassion. Anything else is unacceptable to those of us who walk the journey of grief every day of our lives." Thank you, Terry Elliott. Thank you, Terry Elliott. "I visited with the sexton, Joe Nguyen, for two hours last Wednesday after I had applied to be placed on the agenda. I understand the intent of the cleanup for his crew, but the execution and communication for a town Wahoo size was horrible. The reaction by those affected is intense, raw, and heartfelt. You're seeing that in the folks here tonight. What is done is done. But my biggest question was when and how were the public notified of this clean sweep? I figured if the city had posted on Facebook the photo of a dead squirrel who took down part of the power grid, or posted courtesy notices of the shut-off of part of the water systems for downtown construction, they could have posted a courtesy notice about the upcoming clean sweep of the cemetery, so folks could have noticed of the intent to remove everything and anything. Perhaps something in the utility bill, flyers for businesses to post in their windows, a notice to the churches to post in their bulletins. I would have thought several weeks of that notice would have alerted the community to talk about it and get the word out. With notice, I believe many folks could have removed items prior to them being removed and disposed of by the city crew. With the decline in readership in the Wahoo newspaper over the last several years, and the fact that YouTube's of city council meetings garner on average less than forty views per meeting, I believe the city needs to look at how valuable and important information now be communicated to the citizens of Wahoo. In visiting with Joe, I know he said those cemetery guidelines were on the books but not enforced. He enforced the guidelines, but the lack of communication ripped Band-Aids off wounded hearts for many of my friends in this room. For a long-time Wahoo resident, it was like playing by one set of rules for years and then pulling out another rule in the middle of the game. Poor communication about such a delicate matter brings true animosity and deep distrust for the city and its management. I request the council review how such widespread events can be best communicated and put within those cemetery guideline regulations as to the number of week notice given to the public and where those notices will appear. I also hope the guidelines can be reviewed again and written in a very black and white format as several items are open to interpretation. That will help for many years to come. I hope this showing of affection and support for the cemeteries can lead to improvements, revitalization, and updates in the cemeteries of Wahoo. We have a great history of marvelous caretakers of the cemeteries and a rich history of cemetery decoration. We impress upon the council to provide adequate full-time and seasonal help so the cemeteries can be well-maintained and not just mowed and cleared of former trees and landscaping. We have approximately twenty-four acres of city-owned cemeteries in Wahoo and almost thirty-eight acres of ballfields. I think we all hope that those twenty-four acres of cemeteries look as good as the thirty-seven acres of Wahoo.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, if I wish to speak, what will I do?
Pardon?
Just go to the, go to the front. Just identify yourself. Come up to the podium.
Then I'll speak.
Say your name. Bob Copperstone. Anything else?
Well, we know where we live.
Mr. Mayor, councilman, count the persons. The Copperstone family here in Wahoo have had a plot at Sunrise Cemetery since nineteen forty-three. And maybe a dozen or so other of my relatives' graves are scattered throughout this beautiful facility. Some of my fondest childhood memories are holiday visits from far-flung loved ones who traveled to their old hometown. As always, they want to visit the graves in Wahoo as well as Valparaiso, site of the original Copperstone home today. Finding flowers and decorating the graves was always a serious right and frankly, quite a chore. I wish we didn't have to take long-term steps to save and keep the grounds beautiful. I wish we could coast along and we always have. I wish everyone could be relied upon to do the right thing concerning grave decorations. I also wish grounds were still twenty-six cents a gallon. I could easily join my fellow citizens here tonight to oppose any scriptures on this very personal act. At one time, I might have chosen to join the opposition. But I have a selfish reason to approve of the committee's well-studied decisions. That is because I find myself today in a unique position of helping to improve my surroundings many years from now. You see, I will eventually share a site with my loved ones in the Copperstone family plot at Sunrise. And it's comforting to know that magnus, that magnus and appearances are in professional hands. My relatives need not worry that the plots around me will become less than properly groomed. I decided recently to start improving my future home immediately. I looked at the Copperstone plot the other day and saw that it looked kind of unkempt and crowded. I decided to make it more compliant with the new rules. Two huge cement urns, one of them cracked, and a pair of smaller ones with cracked white paint had to go. There were a pair of flowers two hundred and fifty days out of the year anyway. I stepped back and admired the neatness of the plot. That's how I want my future home and that of my neighbors to look. Life is good, so to death if you do it right. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Sherry Hagaman, eight twenty-four North Linden. I was looking this over that you had printed. And I was thinking, has there ever been any thought to having a cemetery advisory board? Many towns have those, Nebraska City has one, Goodland, Kansas, which is comparable in population to Wahoo as one. And they, they work like the pine mission. They will bring up ideas, vote on ideas, and bring it to the council. This may have been in the books for all these years, but I didn't know we couldn't put, you know, little trinkets, or maybe a windmill, or a figurine on a grave. And now I understand that that can't be done. And I wonder if we would have a board, say that was comprised of one city councilperson, representatives from the two funeral homes, and then maybe seven or eight people at large that would want to serve. Is that something that you would consider? Has anybody ever thought about?
Well, we have some committee people on it. I'm not sure if there's ever been an advisory or not, but I don't see a problem with it.
Because.
I think there's been some people, and Joey can address it.
Yeah, I can, I can sit up there and talk now, it'd be a perfect time.
Well, I do see on the back here, it says something about a cemetery committee. I'm not talking about a committee, I'm talking about a board. Someone that has some authority to make decisions and then bring it to the council.
Well, that committee has authority.
Okay, well, that's all.
So for you guys that don't know me, I'm Joe Nguyen, I'm the street superintendent in the cemetery sexton. First off, I apologize to everybody. This was never the intent, so sorry for what happened, communication could have been better. First thing, complaints. Over the past three years, I've been with the city of Wahoo, we've had complaint after complaint after complaint with the cemeteries from, the ground's not being cleaned, the gravestone's not being heated, turf conditions, just lack of maintenance. So the first year I come to Wahoo, again, I've been reminded many times, I'm not from Wahoo. So I sat back and I watched. And I watched what people did, and I watched the actions that people took. What I learned about the cemetery real quick was, they're right. It's not maintained at the level that Joe and I maintained, or that other employees in my department wanted to maintain. So at that time, staff had multiple conversations with the city minister here in the council to investigate some changes moving forward. The mayor had come to me and said, hey, I've got some people that are wondering about the cemetery and its condition. So we looked at all of that stuff. As a supervisor and a leader, one thing that I've learned over time is, you go to your staff and you ask them, what do they need to do their job? What do you need for resources to put the product that the taxpayers deserve out on the table? So that's what we did. The first step was to talk with the current cemetery supervisor that had been part of the maintenance over the past nine years. He was asked what he needed from his management team to carry out a higher level at the cemetery. His needs consisted of new equipment to replace old, outdated equipment and revisions and enforcement of the current rules that he had in place that had never been enforced in years. So lack of equipment, one problem we have at cemeteries is we don't have irrigation. So we're in a drought, we're on a record drought this fall where we can't water the whole cemetery with sprinklers. It's impossible. And the biggest thing is policy enforcement. We looked through the policies and, I don't know, for, from his sake, he knew that if he enforced policies, he would have this. Which, this to me is beautiful. I truly think that we need more public engagement to fix these problems. And so I'm happy that all of you are here, because I truly think that it's a beautiful thing. So cemetery committee. The city staff, also looking at expansion of Sunrise Cemetery, decided to put a cemetery committee together to help address the expansion and some of these concerns. The team investigated the current policies and what we could, what could be done to move forward with our goals. We realized most of the policies were already in place but not administered. The committee reviewed and discussed changes and added their input to help move this process in the right direction. We also took it a step further. I'm not a professional in cemeteries. I came from the city of Omaha, I worked in the sewer department, ministry department for twenty years. So I come out here and I believe if you're not educated in something, you get educated in it. So what we did is we joined the Nebraska Cemetery Association. That's about forty cemeteries across the entire state, from North Platte all the way to Forest Lawn in Omaha, some of the most beautiful cemeteries around. We, our goal was to seek advice and learn from the professionals that do it every day, just like we do. So we visited cemeteries across the entire state over the past three years. And what we found out was, we all have the same exact issues. You have a black headstone, it gets rain spots, it gets water spots. You don't water the grass, the grass dies. We looked at all these problems and they laughed at us. We're all sitting here and they start laughing, they go, we have the same problems. And the big question was, was how do we close that gap? What do we do as a community to get better? So we took the information we received from other communities and realized that we could do better by changing a few simple policies or implementing them. So the committee sat down, the resolution of the policies, we adopted two clean sweep policies, one from October first to October tenth, prior to the winter season, and then one from March first to March tenth, after the winter season. The intent was, is to deep clean the cemetery by mowing, weeding, clearing dead grass and leaves off of every monument at the cemetery. So we're unable to do that when the policies are broken. So when there's trinkets, glass, bullets, golf balls, all of these things that are on headstones, we are unable to do our jobs the way we want to do them to keep the cemetery looking in the condition that it should be in with these things out there. So the goal is to minimize the items that are unsightly and minimize the complaints that it receives. Items allowed during the winter months would be able to be put back out after the clean sweep. The clean sweep method was elected to help city's cemetery staff not have to use their judgment to decide what should or shouldn't be pulled. Unsightly personal items are just as important to someone who has new personal items. I've learned that the past two weeks. We wanted to make this transition as smooth as fair as possible. So with that being said, we also added policies, added extra policies to benefit the public. One of them was Thanksgiving to Christmas. We thought it would be wonderful if people could put additional grave decorations on from Thanksgiving to January second. So basically from Thanksgiving on, there's usually snow on the ground. And people want to bring out wreaths and their pumpkins and everything that they want to bring out. We are now allowing that. Because we planned on doing a clean sweep in March, which means we come in March first and clean all that stuff up. So where do we fail? We learned quickly that there was communication gap between the public and the city staff. So at this point, I believe that this is one of the best ways for communication, is to be involved in your community. I believe that you show up to these meetings and you, you are engaged. Now, I've been at the cemetery three years, some of the sad things have really bothered me. Every cemetery we've talked to has volunteers. I've seen zero. Every cemetery has community engagement. The only engagement we get is negative. Never positive. There's one person that posts positive stuff about the cemetery. Everything else, every complaint, has been logged over the past thirty years. Why? Because I take them personal. I take my job at a very, very, very high level. And I go for you guys. I truly do. My grandma goes to the cemetery every day. So I want the product that we put out there to be better. And we can't do that unless we have support. So what we learned was, we have, the biggest problem is communication. So personally, over this time, I learned, as a community, we need to be more engaged. And that includes myself. Going to the coffee shops, talking to people. I've had forty conversations with this week, I've probably talked to probably seventy-five percent of the people in this room. If you've talked to me, raise your hand.
Two hours.
I'm here to help, okay? I want things.
When you pull everything, if we pay over a hundred dollars for, I have a monument there, and I have bases that are attached to these stones, it's not for somebody to come pull stuff out and haul it away. I have a mom, I have a dad, I have a brother, I have a whole family. And I take care of my stuff, you don't need to take and throw it in the dump. You call me first, my name's on that, it's on my family's. Why do you take stuff off personal property?
Shirley, I respect your opinion.
That is heartbreaking.
It is, but please let me finish, because I'm going to get you back.
Break them and put them on the floor, take them out, but don't take them out of my bases that I paid for, that are permanent.
I agree.
You don't mow, you don't mow the bases, you don't mow the urns. You can mow the ground, people that stick them in there, take them on out. But stay out of my bases. Unless you're going to pay for putting stuff in.
You know how many grays are out of some of them?
I don't care about it, nobody else, I'm talking about me.
And Shirley, that's the problem.
Somebody needs to get here. It's you guys. How disrespectful.
It's the truth. There are six, there are six thousand headstones in the cemetery.
I'm sure there are. And you're saying, and you're saying, nobody is there to take care of them. My husband drives by there all the time, and he says he sees people out there every single day. My family, and you guys come and rip the shit up? Who's going to pay for it? Are we telling you what to do?
Joe's presenting, I would ask that the public not comment while Joe's presenting. Certainly, you have every opportunity to provide rebuttal or response, but we need to do it in a process.
We need answers.
But he, so once Joe's done, if you want to comment, certainly nobody's authorized. But, but don't interrupt.
So these policies are playing the plays to protect the taxpayers' city assets from loss. Over the past week, we had.
Every season, I think.
We had fifty-plus discussions with the public in the direction of the cemetery would be heading. It is very important that the public is educated on how these policies will help the community reach their goals for a beautiful cemetery. Now, I've listened to the complaints, I've seen the complaints over and over and over and over. The cemetery is not up to my standards. We've made changes, but it's a process. You couldn't just come in and change everything that needed change right off the bat. So policies and resolutions, city policies. This is city policy, actually, chapter ninety-two, twenty twenty-four dash eight. It says right here, "The city owns and manages the city cemeteries. The city council, for the purpose of defraying the cost of the care, management, maintenance, and beautification of all cemeteries. The city council shall have the power and authority to pass such rules and regulate, regulations, including but not limited to schedule fees, cost, operation of the cemeteries as proper for their efficient operation." regulations, including but not limited to schedule fees, cost, operation of the cemeteries as proper for their efficient operation." I'm going to the resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, number three. That the following shall be the rules and regulations for all cemeteries of the city of Wahoo. Here you see, on March first to March tenth, October ter, October first to October tenth, city staff will clean sweep the cemeteries. Any decoration or ornaments will, will be discarded. Below that you see the guidelines for what is not allowed in our cemeteries. So, figurine statues, knickknacks placed on the edge of headstones, solar lights, shepherd hooks, standalone bases, glasses of any kind, wind chimes, benches, crosses placed into the ground, flags of any kind unless placed in a flag holder. No dogs? Yeah, that's about it. So-
When is that dated?
That is, that was long, that's been posted for a very, very long time.
Pardon?
That, Melissa might be able to answer that question. How, how old is that, Melissa?
That was two thousand. This, if you're, were you referring to this?
What he was reading us, when?
I'm reading off of the-
I mean, is it just lately or just years?
I think the last amendment still applies. I don't know if that was part of it, but, I think two thousand five.
Okay, so who's, who's supposed to be following this to make sure that this stuff is happening, I guess?
Who's on the cemetery committee?
Yeah, that's all.
Who's on the cemetery committee? Who's responsible to make sure that this was happening because it's never happened?
Not since my dad's been here.
So if it's been a policy, who's, I guess, who was responsible to make sure that this was being done?
I am.
So who's on the cemetery committee?
For the last years, it's been on there for years. So who's been doing it all these years before it's never been done? But whose job was it?
It hasn't worked. The complaints show that it has not worked. That's the problem. That's why we were, that's why we acted upon what we did is because the complaints came in. There's people in this room that have sent complaints. I have, we, we keep them. I've had conversations with them.
Complaints about flowers that are in a permanent vase on your monument?
No.
You can't mess with those.
Taking the knickknacks, solar lights.
We lost that so that we could put those flowers in there.
That's personal property. If an attorney talks to you, he's gonna tell you that.
Could I ask a question or are you not finished with your presentation?
I'm not. I keep an ear up here.
Well, go ahead. I'll ask later.
So, the cemetery committee was implemented in twenty twenty-three. It was myself, Rich Capple, Steve Faisal, Chris Rappel, Shane Sweet, Patrick Nagel, Mark Pentco from Smoot Funeral Homes, which he stepped off, and then we had a member from the American Legion.
Can you slow down so I can write those names down, please?
So, one thing that stood out to me the most, and this is why I want to bring up the policies. Everybody knows there's an anonymous Facebook post out there, which is public information, so we can talk about public information if people post up, but Big Siders County Community Board post. I read those. And sometimes they suck to read, but I read them. Why? Because I want to be better. So there's one that stuck out to me. I'm not gonna use anybody's name. But it said, "So the city office allowed, said solar lights aren't allowed." The head of the cemetery said he has no problem with solar lights as long as they are in permanent containers and aren't mowing, aren't in the mowing the way of mowing. Solar lights give comfort to families and you will see them in many cemeteries, which I agree with. There's a reason why they're not put in there. But this is what struck a chord to me. They need to be on the same page with their rules. We cannot do our jobs if we can't enforce our rules. There's nobody in here that's ever had a job where if you can't enforce the policies, you can't do your job. So, we have options as a community to decide what we want to do going forward. The council, I mean, I will do anything I can do to make things better. But from my standpoint, if we're not allowed to do our jobs because of, we can't follow policies, our job becomes very, very difficult. And I have to protect my staff, and I also want to do our job at a very, very high level. So, I don't feel like we're given that opportunity from the public standpoint to try to make things better because change creates conflict. And sometimes you have to deal with conflict, and that's the beauty of this. We're here, we're all here. Tonight's my wife's birthday, by the way. She's, she'll be really upset with me, but that tells me how important you guys are in the monitoring of the project. So, here we are. Thank you.
So you say you asked for volunteers. When did you ask for volunteers?
In thirty-five conversations I have this week, I think there's four or five people in here that have volunteered to come out and help us out at the cemetery.
But you never asked for volunteers before.
Whenever I take a phone call, like I said, it's completely negative. I shouldn't have to ask for volunteers.
If you have a question, certainly come to the podium or comment as a response. Because then, then the, the collective council could certainly respond as well.
It's me. Who came up with this list of no's? You know, what an unfriendly sign that is to come into the cemetery now. No, 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 no. Who came up? Were these always?
Yeah, they've been there for years.
Solar lights are new. So somebody has come up with this new list. They haven't had solar lights for years.
They're in a permanent container. They, they don't mow those, they don't mow the urns, they don't mow these that are stuck on our stone.
Was it your committee that came up with this list?
No, they've been in city policies for many years.
Can they be revisited?
It's expensive. Are they gonna replace it?
This committee, how many at-large members do you have on this committee? People that are interested like Linda or me or Shirley? Can you expand your committee?
We had two. We had one from the vets club and, and a funeral home. The rest were city councils, city staffs.
Right, but you need to have input.
That, that's the beauty of this. I agree. I'm not disagreeing with you. I think that's wonderful and I would love to have it.
But I do think that some of these restrictions need to be revisited.
I agree.
So Sherry, what I'm hearing is you're, you're wanting policy review and the committee makeup to be reviewed.
Right, and I think that this committee, is this an official committee with the city? It is official.
It's not a cemetery advisory board. That's a separate legal entity under a statute which has tax levying authority and all sorts of other things. It's, it's a committee that makes recommendations to the council.
It's a committee of members of the council and the staff that are involved with the cemetery.
I just think an advisory board would be an idea to look at maybe down the road. So, okay.
Debbie Ward, nineteen fifteen, or four. I don't know if you still knew about that. So, I think that we need some clarification. Because I always felt like what was in the urn or in the permanent vase, both are permanent, that, that those were private property like some people have said, and that you guys wouldn't do anything with them. But so, for these ten days in March and ten days in October, you do take them out of the private urns.
The whole, the whole concept behind that was to be able to allow certain things, but clean up the stuff that, you know, I can tell you this, everybody in this room is here because they made name and they take care of their gravestones. Like, there's six thousand headstones out there. There's probably sixty-two million here. We take care of those other fifty-nine hundred of them. So, there's families that might come from out of state and those flowers might sit there year-round and then they blow all over the place. And we, so we have to focus on the whole cemetery as a whole, not just the people that come out there on a weekly or daily basis. So, knowing that this is gonna happen October first, the goal behind that is, is that people will come out there, grab their stuff, pull it off, once the cleanup is done, put it back on. Now my guys, they worked their butt off these past few weeks.
That must work they didn't need to be doing.
They went through it. They cleaned, they mowed, they weeded, they cleaned up every single headstone. They straightened headstones. They trimmed every single tree in that cemetery. Every single one was visible. Every road was red. And if you drive through there, I understand your flowers are gone. You will see that there's gravestones that have never been seen because they're covered in two inches of dirt. Now they're visible. That's why we do it. Because those people matter as well.
That is good. I think that's a better positive thing. But I think that most people are upset because things were taken, like I didn't know that this was gonna happen. So I had just put brand-new flowers out in the permanent vase and they're gone. They're, and it's not cheap to buy flowers.
And we're sorry about that. The communication, the communication should have been better. And that's where-
The one other thing that has been there for fifteen years was an angel statue, angel, that was attached to the cement platform. And somehow your guys got it off because it was gone.
We have lots of stuff in our shop, and here's the other thing. I've talked to multiple people that have said, where's my stuff? And they yet to have come out to look for it. I have called, I have called multiple people that have sent complaints and tried to tell them that their stuff was out there because my guys marked it. So after the first day that we knew this was the problem, the compassion of our staff put people's games down and wrote it down. And so there is stuff out there. You're more than welcome to come out and look. It was hard to do this, but then-
I already got it.
The hard, so it was there.
But my thought is, why was it taken off when it is not in the way of mowing or anything?
Because it was against city policies. It's a knickknack. It's something that's not supposed to be allowed.
It's like, it was a two hundred and fifty dollar angel. It's not a different-
You don't mow the bases.
And, and again, I think fundamentally, one thing I think we've all made clear is, one, a review of the policies, a re-review of the policies needs to happen. Which would include the communication of it, right? Going forward, what is the communication, what are policy changes, all of those things, right? I think, I think we're all to the, in agreement that that, those things need to, to happen, right? Which is, is, and how that, how that's gonna happen is gonna be these guys' decision as council members as to is the commu, the committee makeup change or there are more volunteers because now people have expressed some interest? What policy, what do they think the policy should be? Maybe they should be changed in some way because the group thinks- I think, I think certainly Joe's not disagreeing that, that that effort needs to happen, right? Unfortunately, what has happened has happened. And so, looking backwards, there's, there's nothing that really can be done. It's unfortunate, obviously. But I think we need to, we keep our, our eyes looking forward to when this point of beginning and how can we address the communication needs? How can we address the policy issue? How can we get more volunteers to assist with the process, right? And just be forward-thinking to try to make this a better experience for everybody and easier on the staff. Because to Joe's point, maintaining that when Joe has the street department, everything else going on, is extremely difficult, right? It's a, it's a very big burden on, on city staff. So they're trying to manage a lot of things.
So I think terminology should be changed too because I don't consider a two hundred and fifty dollar angel that stands two feet tall and was attached to the cement, I don't consider that an nightmare.
And I think that's a great point, Debbie, in terms of having people who are volunteers that would view the policy and say, do I understand this? Maybe they're written in a way that they aren't understandable. There needs to be clarification. Because the people who created the policy makes sense to them, but maybe not to everybody else. And so to have that as a sounding board, I think, is a great idea.
I, I think for anyone who purchased urns, Debbie and I are the same vintage. I don't know if you went with your folks or your family, what they did. But when we were sold urns, which used to be made by a caretaker out at the cemetery or someone on staff, we were told everything in the urn would not be touched. So please, keep that in mind that many of these people and their families were told, if you purchase the urn from a city, you can keep stuff in there and nothing done. So please understand that a great number of these people, the friends whose parents were my parents' age and bridge club and church and everything else, they were, they bought those with that impression. I know that's what we were told when my mother and I bought our folks' families thirty-five years ago, bought their plots. That if you buy the urns, nothing in the urns is touched. So that's why I think you see so much fervor. You know, I had plants put in assuming they would be there this fall and the entire plant was removed. So, that, that's something, just a little caveat to remember, that that's what, it was marketed to us. I think most folks would agree that.
I'm Sherry Reese and I'm six-six-nine with fifteen. I guess in all of this that we're talking about, when you went over the policy for this, is how you were going to notify the people of Wahoo. Nobody buys the Wahoo paper anymore because it isn't even the Wahoo paper. The, I used to buy it for a dollar outside the, the thing. I'm not gonna spend three dollars to listen to Uten, Ashland, all the schools around and Omaha. More stuff is in Omaha, in near than Wahoo. So, that's my point is, and I go out there and water for my friends and my, every, the last two years for summers, twice a week, and I enjoy it. It's my time to talk to my dad and mom and that's what, it was peaceful. It's always been peaceful out there. And I see Ken Mashak, who was a meter reader, my, my best friend and I loved him so much. In Weston they have, at the cemetery, they have a list of the instructions for them. And I read those. I mean, everything. But then I put on his wave, I mean, I read that. So, we need something to explain all of this as, you know. And I'm, I'm, I'm not happy. I've talked to Joe. But we gotta go forward and the notification wasn't there for any of us. That is the hurting part of it. And my heart is hurt and all of us too. But I want to move forward. Okay?
My name is Colonel Fisher and that's my biggest thing. I've, I've talked to, called and asked and they said as long as they were in permanent urns, cement things, they could stay there year-round. If you put flowers out there at Memorial Day that were stuck in the ground, you had ten days to get it out of there or they would be gone. And I had called and this is what I've been told. And for not letting us know ahead of time that you were going to take these things, it just, it's heartbreaking. I go to the cemeteries, I do probably fifteen cemeteries at Memorial Day. And this is, it just hurts a lot. I'm sorry, but I just think the lack of communication. And I'm with the lady, why buy the Wahoo paper? There's nothing in it about Wahoo. So somehow you have to figure out when these things change. And even if the rules have been there since twenty twenty-three or twenty thousand three, whatever, that's not what I was told. So somebody didn't know the information to give incorrectly. I mean, why did we spend the extra money to buy these permanent things if we couldn't use them? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Patton Serna and I live twelve fifty-nine Molly Boulevard. I am one of the people affected through family members' graves, but my question now is, after having read the policy that is, was on tonight's agenda, I have a question on the dates. If you're gonna do May, March first through March tenth and October first through October tenth, that needs to be on the new sign that's out there. And right now the new sign just says May first to October first. It looked like artificial and real plants or flowers were allowed. So you can't have it go into October first if you're gonna start a cleanup on October first. So the sign does not match your minute or your policy. And I think it'd be real simple if that's what you're gonna enforce. That should have been on the sign, March first to March tenth, October first to October tenth. A clean sweep up, clean sweep up everything, including flowers in permanent bases and urns will be removed. If not already- If not already, never by your sign. That, that is to me the only way you can in good conscience say you've notified the public. Put it right in front of them at the beginning of the cemetery. Even if it says no, 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 at least it gives us the knowledge of what is and isn't allowed. So that's all I had to say is there's a discrepancy right now with that new sign. And there's not a clear definition of when this sweep is gonna take place. Because nobody that comes from, the only reason I knew about this is my daughter saw this on Facebook and I am not on Facebook. So that's the only reason I knew about the meeting tonight that was gonna be about cemetery policies. But I just have a, just need to get that clarified on the sign because it's not correct. Doesn't match the policy.
Jason Blackwell, five oh six East Cent Street, also the Assistant Street Superintendent for Town. Lot of passion here and this is, this is terrible. Now, I, I think what's important, and I'm just, I'm hearing all this, like the misstep was the communication, right? Because we're not saying that you can't put things in that base, right? We, I think that that's what we all have to get to as a community, right? Be like, hey, the communication was a bad misstep. I'm gonna speak on behalf of something. So for you guys that don't know, we real quick. I am a resident of Wahoo fifteen years, served in the military, retired. I am from a small town in Missouri and I wanted to raise my daughter in a small town Midwest. So this is my home. I now have a grandbaby here. I, I, my background is in engineering, data sciences. I wanted to change my life a little bit, so I focused on three things, face, family, community. And in doing so, I had to let go of some things for me personally. I'm just gonna share a story real quick because I think we're, we're all talking with each other some, anyways. So in doing so, I really didn't want a future help. I didn't want to go back to the corporate world and I really wanted to be involved in my community. I ran into a friend of mine in town and he said, Jason, you, you probably should go meet this guy named Joe Lynn. He's a good guy. Go, go talk to him. I'm sharing the story because the first time I met Joe, I, I, this is gonna sound weird. I fell in love with him. Like he's a good young man. He's got a vision and he wants to help. If you understood truly the passion that he has for his job and your tax dollars and what the community deserves, I just want you to understand that. Because I wouldn't have taken the job. I came to the city, to the street department, of all places to work for him. Because he had passion. He cares. We had a misstep communications for that. I know, I'm truly sorry. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because after day one, Joe recognized something was completely wrong. And he was like, whoa. So when we say we tried to capture things, our intent was not to be mean, to be disrespectful. We do have things in the shop. So we went to the team and said, hey, take things that look like they're valuable, sentimental, and let's put them aside, right? The names on them. Now, there was a, there was a flux of that that had already went out the door, right? It was gone. Again, can't fix that. We can fix all of this going forward, I believe, right? Is, with this type of engagement, talking, what do we need to do to be better? What can we do? The signs, real quick. The, the sign, that, that red and white sign has been in the cemetery for thirty-five years, I think.
Thirty-five years?
I, I've talked to folks. So, hold on, hold on, I'm gonna come back. So there's a lot of things that we have to discuss as a community. Maybe not that exact sign, but there has been a sign there for very long. I know that sign is at least twenty years old. Now, the funny, not funny, the thing is, is I would ask people, hey, did you know the rules? And they're like, what rules? Right? And so there's a thing that happens, I think, with humans, right? We get into a mode of disoperation. And so, I saw her earlier, was talking with her, they come out there every day and she's lived her whole life and said, I didn't know there were rules there. So we were like, let's, it wasn't a reaction to cover anything. Our reaction was really to, oh my gosh, there's a gap here. We have got to get something out. Like, hey, call us. We'll talk to you, right? We're gonna figure this out. We do need to fix those signs. That, the dates that are on there are not the current ones. But that's, that's a process, right? You have to order the signs. We have to get that. So I'm sharing all of this because it's super important. Like what's happening here is good. As, as much as it hurts some of your souls, some of your hearts, it hurts us too. It wasn't easy for our guys, especially after the fact. And when some of the things got expressed in social media, like, oh, they're stealing our stuff. That's, no, no people. Nobody's doing that. None, none of that is a priority. And I bring that up because we have morale, right? We already have a problem hiring in the city. And, and if we're gonna step on our own, I don't know. I, I think we should be better, right? We should, we should have these conversations. So I just wanted to share that with you guys because I'm not going anywhere. I plan on being buried here. This is my home and I just want us to be a good community here.
Can they send, they're sending us bills every month. And I know it's not gonna get to everybody, but couldn't they put a note in there a couple months ago or to let you know? Some of the people that are in town will not know it. But they're the ones that probably don't clean their stuff. Like I said, I'm out there, I've got permanent, my mom, my dad, my brother, eight graves and it's very expensive. And you know, those urns, my mom and dad have an urn. And if you plant geraniums and stuff in there, you plant in the spring, but you're not gonna jerk them out because they're gonna die. You leave them there till fall and take them and get them out.
And we won't touch any of the bases.
But I've got, what?
During normal maintenance operations, nothing in the bases gets touched. Again, this occurred because there was a communication gap. Communication, it was, it should have been explicit. If you have things that you want to put back on the graves after we're completed with the cemetery maintenance, the occult winter maintenance, please bring it up.
We have to take out the stuff in permanent basis.
But sure, so you're taking on something really important too. So Joe took, I don't know, forty calls. I know I've dealt with several of you. I took many calls, had face to face, held our hands, weighed pride. This, this is the reality. I also, he started asking this question. Joe and I sat and we said, well, okay, how do you get your information? I've heard several. Don't do the Wahoo paper, okay? Some people do the Wahoo paper. Bills and utilities, great for the folks that are here. Doesn't cover our folks in, in Mauna. Well, I guess maybe them, but you don't wanna be an outsider. Social media, some have social media. I don't do social media, so I don't do Facebook. So there's a, there's a, there's a complex problem that's occurred in our society that's impacting. You see it at the, at the, at a higher level, but it's affecting our local level too. How do we get our information today? Because it's very disparate. It's very fractured. As a community, we need to kind of figure this out because it maybe, there's probably a multi-pronged approach, right? Probably set up in flyers and utilities for local. Probably set up a Facebook post. Should probably put something out in the, what is it called?
Or around businesses or something on their windows like your fundraiser.
This is, these are the lessons that, so I think, I think, just, they're very hard lessons. They're the hardest lessons. Yes, ma'am, hundred percent.
Do you not have records of who owns those out there? I mean, if somebody's not caring for that, can you tell them that? Can you say, hey, you haven't maintained this, we need you to? Well, you have records of what, who owns it. You have an address. You have a contact name. I gave all my information when I got close.
Those who have, things change. So for instance, when my father passed away two years ago, the cemetery that, that my family's buried in, like they have a process that like if, and my dad owned like the, the deeds, right? So when he was passing away, they contacted my mother and me and my sister. So there's a whole lot of things that are here because to your point, yeah, we have records. But that doesn't mean the person hasn't moved. They have a new phone number. They never, they, they've since passed away and we don't know. So there's gaps everywhere.
But we should be required to upgrade that one. That should be part of our purchase.
Sure. Yeah, I agree, right? But that's a, that's a responsibility for myself, for you, for, to make sure that I'm updating those records with the city hall, right? So, yes, ma'am.
So when was this cemetery established? What year?
Eight.
Eighteen seventy-eight?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Eighteen seventy-eight, okay. And there was six thousand?
Four hundred and nine.
Six thousand, I thought he said six thousand.
It is.
Okay, if it's been eighteen something, there's gonna be gravestones out there that, there's nobody you can contact.
Correct.
Right. So, and so he said they had to go out and dig out a lot of dirt around. Well, isn't that something that should have been done, been doing for years?
Hundred percent agree. But why wasn't it? And now it is, right? You're a hundred percent correct. This is the passion and the things that this man is bringing is those things should have been being done and they weren't. And they weren't, they weren't being done probably for many, many, many reasons. I don't, I don't have the answer to that. But I do know that going forward, that's what we want. We want everything, I've been here for a year and I know there were times during, and you can tell, right? We know the folks that are coming in roughly. I don't know, no, like I'm not, I, you know, I'm not spying on people. But what I mean by that is there are, there's, there's graves out there from the eighteen hundreds. Nobody's gonna take care of them. So, right, that's a function of the city now to make sure those are managed and maintained. For a year, these are a lot of the complaints that folks have come to us with is like, hey, you know, this grave site right next to me looks like crud. Well, it does. We're trying to do better. We're trying to, we're trying to maximize our resources, staff and, and budget to the best possible way that we possibly, we're just trying the best that we can do. But you're a hundred percent correct. And so the, the war flash, right? I'm a veteran. My whole family's a veteran. There were, eighty percent of them were covered. Covered. You couldn't, so our guys, again, we're asking for pride. We're not asking you to come and do a job. We're asking you to show a little pride and let's help us bolster our community and be more involved. Those are all cleaned off now. You walk through the cemetery, you can see now War, War One vets. There's Spanish American vets, plaques that were covered for years. So you're a hundred percent correct. Why wasn't it being done? I don't know. Will it be done going forward? Yes.
Well, I think we can all agree that the biggest problem, and I have to tell you that I have no family out there, but I've got a lot, a lot of friends. Cause I've been here since sixty-six. So I, it's pretty simple. The main thing is all of a sudden, you're gonna act on these policies that supposedly have been around for a while or policies that you just came up with and nobody knew about it. That is, that's the crux of the situation.
One more kind of comment on that, since it's been a while, a couple times. The, the solar lights that might have gotten added like in two thousand and five, I don't know. But what I do know is that has been probably the policy here for thirty years. And again, why wasn't enforced? I don't know, right? So I don't wanna get too gummed up on it. I think we can all, either, we may or may not appreciate the value of these things to, to keep the graveyard and material looking beautiful, you know, the sanctity of that site should be preserved. I just kind of lost my train of thought there for a second. My apologies.
You're talking about solar lights.
No, I was thinking I've got it in, but I, oh, so the changes to the policy were really only three things. And those were the clean sweep from the first of March to the tenth of March and October. And then the addition of bringing shepherd's hooks out, bringing wreaths out, bringing plants out from Thanksgiving to December. Everything else, as far as I can tell, and I haven't looked through all of them, but I did dig through some of the older CRs, these have always been the policies. Nothing, we didn't change. We added clean sweeps and we added the extended, hey, from Thanksgiving to January second, please come out and decorate your family's graves. So.
I appreciate that, yes, we did have a communication problem mainly. I would hope that you would consider changing your policy of robbing my bases of the flowers that I just bought. And if they're in a permanent vase, mounted on the monument, leave them alone. That's my property. I don't expect, they're not dirty enough to cemetery. I agree that the ones that are on the ground, blowing all over, yes, those need to be picked up. But you made more work for your boys that worked their butts off by taking all the flowers out of the vase.
But where did they go with the flowers?
Well, shed in the dumpster.
I was told we grad sealed them. That's what I was told. I was told that there's no way we threw them away. We took them to our family grad sales. That's what I was told.
I was told they were taken away by a dumpster. So I was gonna go talk to the lady that's got the dumpster in Weston.
I did find some of my flowers in the shed.
Mike, when did you go, can you go to the shed?
Okay, we've got a conversation going out there. We know the issues. We know we did not communicate properly. We know it's probably good to expand to volunteer committee, part of it anyway, incorporate that in and review pretty much all the policies. But basically, anything that's laying there that's not solidly connected is subject to re.
Right. What do you mean by that, Jerry? That is not solidly connected?
Pardon?
What, can you explain what you mean exactly by solidly connected, Jerry? Are you mean little tractors? Or a, a, a full clean sweep? Are you, are you taking everything from the, from monument urns and bases, et cetera?
If they're solid, to me, that's.
Yeah, but what, what's solid? What, what's your definition, Jerry?
If it's sitting in a concrete vase and if it's a solid urn, to me, those are permanent.
Thank you, Jerry.
This is where, sorry. I, I think to me, we have, we have two options, right? We have option A, which is the council discusses what is the next step in the way of sound board, public review, comment on, on the policies, where there may be ambiguities in the policy, what, who should go, all those sort of things, take public engagement on that issue. Or it gets referred to the committee for a recommendation on how to do that, right? I think, I think certainly all your comments, a lot of them make sense. Not to say all of them will be agreed to. The, the city and or the committee may disagree with you on one or more points. But I think there needs to be written public engagement and either the city or the, the committee, but coming back to the city, needs to decide how to move forward to improve things. Because that's, that's what you're hearing staff saying is they wanna improve things and we just have to figure out how, right?
Whether it's the council or whether it's a cemetery committee or it's a volunteer committee that works with the cemetery committee, it will take action to make any changes. And we'll figure out in communication. I, my wife has relatives out here. I have relatives and elders and they tore out everything and it's just a better space now. A lot of people know where I live, got relatives out there. I didn't know anything about it till I went out and drove around. So, anyway.
I just have one more question if I can. Are you, or do you need me to come up front? Or can you, I just have one to clarify. I just wanted to clarify if the, the flowers that were taken out of permanent urns affixed to the monuments, was that a mistake this time? And going forward, can we leave them in from the March first to the tenth, October first to the tenth or not?
I think the policy as it stands is they would be removed. The question is, should the policy be changed?
Yes.
But as it stands today before the policy is changed, the answer that would be, yes, they're removed. But they should be removed by the person and brought back.
This is an important question. So once again, right, the, if the communication were to happen, I don't think we'd be here. And again, I'm actually grateful that this is occurring because I think this is going to be better for the city and for folks as well. The intent is, we would, the intent of that, if you read it, was if you want to save anything out there for just the clean sweeps, because we're not pulling unless it's tattered or hanging out. But the folks that are maintaining, you're not gonna have this problem. We're, we wouldn't pull your stuff. So if it was communicated, if you had flowers, you would have just taken them out on the first. We would have done our clean sweep, starting really, we said to the tenth, we were pretty much done by the third. You could have probably stepped back out and started doing that. If you're out of town or, and we, we see this a lot, right? There's folks that come once a year, some that's twice a year. They put some flowers, the plastic are real. They die. They get faded. They start to break apart. Those would be the things that would be clean sweep, right? Because the folks didn't respond to it, right? They, they didn't come on the first and pull their stuff. Now, nobody did because they didn't communicate it enough, right? Fair. Again, I don't wanna keep that kicking up horse right now. So we're not going to just be random pulling stuff out of your guys' stuff. That was never the intent, right?
Yes, I'm still, yes, I'm still confused. Either they will be pulled or they won't.
If you don't, if you don't remove them, they will be pulled. If they remain, just between the first and the tenth.
Right, and the first and the tenth. Like I said, the signage out there doesn't match. Well, there was a sign to the left and I believe that was green and it was there. And that was kind of partially covered by a tree. But the new, the new red and white, the red and white sign, is that, isn't that new?
No, that's the old sign. We just moved it over for now to draw attention.
It is the old sign. I thought it was much bigger and green when.
There was one there as you came into the south of the red and white side and then the north, there was also one right there. So again, we just had the guys pull those for now till we get a new sign and put them there to kind of draw visibility.
Okay, so there will be different.
Yes, ma'am, there will be other things. Yes, ma'am, they will be.
Okay. And I am willing, to be honest, the committee from volunteer committee.
I don't know, you wanna speak?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay.
In all, they said, "We didn't take care of the ground." When my husband was alive, we took our mower out there, and we mowed. And over the holidays, Memorial Day, I take the wheat trimmer out there, and I mow. And so it's not that we don't do it. Any of my loved ones, the stuff that I put on there, I bungee corded to the urn, so hell or high water or wind can't take it. But you guys took it. And you guys said, "Well, you can put it back after the ten days." How in the hell can I put it back when you have it or you destroyed it?
Where it's already been dressed, or something like... There's nothing you can do to take this back.
I know there isn't, but learn from it.
Correct. Yes.
Joe brought up a great point, which is to say, unfortunately, the people in this room, they got caught up in a larger problem, right? Which is that you have six thousand grave sites. We have a number of people who do a fantastic job themselves. And the vast majority don't, right? Because they're not around. And so you get caught up in them trying to address the larger...
But that's with people's lawns. Some people don't give a damn about their lawns. Other people make their eschymatology.
I just have one question. First of all, I think our cemetery is the nicest-looking cemetery out of any of them.
Used to be.
Oh, I'm Zoe Pearson. Our cemetery is one of the nicest cemeteries I've ever decorated. I'm not getting emotional, but you said the March first to the tenth and the October first to the tenth is the clean sweep. But then you also said from Thanksgiving to January?
January second.
So that means we can have things in the permanent bases now? And are you talking from Thanksgiving to January, like wreaths or something? I mean, I don't understand.
You could add things that otherwise would be permanent.
It's important to note, though, why that is. It's because we're not gonna be doing any...
That's my question, I was just confused.
No, no, it's a great question, Jenny. Again, we want the cemetery to be beautiful. We want people to be able to go out and celebrate their loved ones, right? So we're not doing any maintenance. Basically, we're shutting down now, right? We're not gonna cut the grass for late, well, with the weather, we might, I don't know. But, right, the theory is, starting November, we're not gonna be string trimming, we're not gonna be mowing. So if you wanna come out and do a little extra decorating, by all means do. Just know January second, please have it picked up, because if not, we're going to clean it up again on the second. Of the things that were brought out, like the additional Christmas wreath, shepherd's hook, things like that. If it's... Again, once again, I'm gonna reiterate. If it's in a permanent vase, which could be the concrete or an urn built on the foundation, we're not going to touch it during that time. They only got touched this time because of the communication gap. That was it.
Is there, or some of us who come out and decorate, you know?
So after January second, you don't want anything on the graves either?
Unless it's permanent bases.
Yeah, just the additional...
Extra things, like a wreath on a... On a stand. But some of those are seasonal, they aren't really just Christmas. So you don't want anything out there after January second.
In future clean sweeps, we have to take stuff out of your permanent...
My name is Lisa Collins, five Fairway Drive. I think... I'm getting the impression that maybe you will be adding more people to a committee to address this. From what you've heard here tonight, you'd better have some women on that community. Because that's what, you got a lot of mama bears. And you don't... You all know, if you're married, if you're divorced, you don't wanna mess with a mama bear. And that's what you've done.
I think we'll wrap up now. Very few of you wrote your name down and address, so the only database we've got right now, what? Go with that. Put it that way. So we get the committee going, and then see where it goes with it.
And aren't there hours and days we can go out there? Because when I went out there just to... My first find out about it, there was nobody there.
Seven, three thirty Monday to Friday.
Seven to three thirty Monday to Friday.
There doesn't mean somebody's gonna be there. So if you need access, call City Hall and just say, "Hey, I need to go to the cemetery." Just double-check, I guess is what I get. Because they're... Again, even in a traditional mode, like Rich would come over and push snow, so there's not always gonna be somebody out switching this time of year. You're gonna start to see, again, we're done with our kind of maintenance. That doesn't mean there's other stuff going on, but please just give us a call, and we'll get somebody else. Seven, three thirty Monday to Friday.
So I only have really one comment that I wanna address. First, well, actually, two. The first is, I completely understand the communication issue and will take majority of the responsibility for that breakdown. But this is not an issue that is limited to just city... Or to the cemetery issues. We have a communication breakdown on all of the things. Just like we mentioned, people aren't on social media, people don't look for the utility bills, they don't get the newspaper. So we are trying to communicate what the city's doing over this entire gamut of from the person who only has social media to the person who only reads The Market Weekly or The Newspaper. It is a struggle for us, so I would say that. So I get frustrated from time to time, and you guys have all heard that, because we don't have public engagement. So while having this many people come to a council meeting can be intimidating a little bit, I do appreciate you taking the time to come and speak your piece. Your comment about mama bear, I appreciate that comment, because as... Sorry. As a city administrator, I'm sort of a mama bear over these individuals. And I am extremely ashamed of the community on some of the things that I heard or said to these people. Specifically, name-calling, yelling. This is not the way that we solve problems. And so I'm glad that we've been able to have a civil conversation here. And we all can do better, us, all of us, us. But I ask that you do better as well. If you have an issue, let's have an adult conversation about it. Because name-calling and screaming and yelling doesn't accomplish that. Being a public servant, you gotta have thick skin, and I understand that. I've been here for thirty years, I've gained some pretty thick skin. But we are also struggling to find people who wanna be public servants. And when you're... When you receive that from the public, it makes it difficult to find people who are gonna wanna do that job. So I apologize for the lack of communication. I assure you, I will do better. I would ask that you do the same, so that's all I have to say.
Okay, we will move on to our next item. That being a little further than the final reading of the order. We're just gonna go ahead. Come up hallways if you're present. Annexes, from the proper angle, please, to the fifth Street and all the big restaurants. Corporate places, remember? Broadside Center, and the French House, being a big...
You guys work these first, and tell them the whole time? Pardon? Stay in motion, so you have a fair plan, right? Yes.
Yes.
Yes.